Pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the motherland which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, the living, the justus for all. Thank you. Okay, here we go. What a good way to start tonight. Ms. Sagrano, we're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the first rejected item, we have Chief Brown is here for an update on departmental operations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing I am going to say I think will be heard by the board here. The evidence is right there with the chair. I'd like to introduce to you the new canine for the Burlington Police Department. His name is Zuko. Zuko is a purebred chocolate Labrador retriever that we just got on November 1st from Boonefield Labradors in Ridge, New Hampshire. Just to give you a little bit of the background, back in early fall of 2023, the department applied for a burn grant through the Office of Grants and Research for the Commonwealth. And we were rewarded $40,000. Out of that $40,000, we earmarked some of it for active shooter training down at the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center. And the rest of it was earmarked towards a search and rescue dog. As part of the program, we were allowed to do search and rescue. And if you look back over our not-too-distant past here, we've had some incidents where a search and rescue dog could have been very beneficial. And one of them is, as you probably all remember, a person who had gone into the woods one cold winter night, and unfortunately, we were not able to find her till the next morning. But we have plenty of children and adults in town with mental health disorders, autism, some of the elderly who have walked away from different places. And a search and rescue dog makes sense at this point in time. And as we can see from the chair, it also makes sense from a mental health component. That, you know.
Oh, yes. We're not at that point yet, sorry.
Everybody loves a dog. So we saw what was coming down the pike. We're probably a little behind the scenes, or a little behind the times in getting one. But we got the award back in November of '23. We were awarded again for Fletzy in the S, Search and Rescue. And what we did was, we had Lieutenant Jerry McDonough, who spearheaded the effort to do the due diligence and check around the area of different departments that have had both comfort dogs and search and rescue dogs. He did a great job. He was able to narrow it down to three breeders. He then was able to partner up with Lunenburg Police Department, Officer Brad McNamara, who has Comfort Dog Hank, who highly recommended Boonefield Labs.
Didn't want to work that way.
So we, that's okay. So we did a selection committee. The line lieutenants interviewed seven candidates back in early September, and Officer Medico was the unanimous choice. She has experience with her own dog. And where she fell in seniority and experience, she was the right pick. She's done an outstanding job already. She was able to take over the process from Lieutenant McDonough, has worked with Boonefield and the breeders. She has also done a naming contest. The name Zuko came out of a naming contest that she did in partnership with SRO Dom Calicchio through the elementary schools. And Zuko was the name that came out. So back last Friday on November 1st, she picked up the dog. He is now going to stay with her 100% of the time. And within a couple of weeks, she'll start basic obedience. And once the basic obedience is completed, she will then move into the search and rescue component. And we will look down the road at cross-training him for therapy and comfort. So, welcome to Zuko. And we wanted to bring him before the board before we start some, you know, social media campaigns to notify the town and let all the townspeople know of our newest officer. He's the first officer we've hired that everybody seems to like, so hopefully it stays that way. So hopefully you'll like him and you'll, I'm certain you'll see him around. Already, the feedback we've gotten has been tremendous. I don't know that we're going to get him back from the chair, but. But we're happy to take any questions. Myself, Lieutenant McDonough, and obviously Officer Medico are here to answer any questions if you have any.
You have any questions for anybody? Go ahead. Do you want to start, Sarah? Questions?
No questions. Happy to bring Zuko on board. And just wanted to say, I appreciate your work in, you know, seeking out these grants and these creative ways of.
Walk around the table.
Supporting and serving the community.
There you go. He's always doing a search.
So, yeah, no questions. Welcome aboard, Zuko.
Thank you.
Michael?
No, full support of this. I'm a huge talk person, and I love the idea. And we've seen the benefits of what support dogs can do, along with the other component of search and rescue. So, I mean, mental health is one of the biggest issues we face in this country today. Every little bit we can do to chip away at it is a positive in my book. So, welcome, Zuko, and wish you the best of luck with training.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One quick question. Any plans to, I'm assuming you do, incorporate it with the schools or visit schools?
Yes, and not just the schools, but Leahy and some of the, you know, other places in town, from Primrose to, I mean, she's going to have a, quite a heavy calendar as we go forward, there's no doubt about it.
And Reese, just one thing, I've never seen her cross a smile as big as that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Congrats.
I just wanted to see if we can get them to come to our meetings as a support.
Mental health.
I think having Zuko here would be very beneficial. No, of course, I mean, from what I heard, Chief, you know, a very extensive search, and I'm thrilled, truly. So, again, just, once again, wonderful, wonderful work. Welcome aboard, Zuko.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And from the chair? Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm thrilled. I am absolutely thrilled. I just, I love the idea, every concept of this. There isn't one part of it I think is not right. Everything is right for this town. Support, mental health, search, rescue. I think you're going to be great with him. I watch you walk the hallway with him. I think, it's just, I'm just thrilled. I am thrilled, so. I think he wants to come to all our meetings. He looks very comfortable here.
Settling him nicely.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may add as well, our mental health clinician already has been partnering with Officer Medico. She has tons of ideas to, you know, segue into the mental health component. So he's, he's going to pay dividends, there's no doubt in my mind, as we go forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your support, everybody.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Oh, now I have to vote.
Sidney, you want to take some?
I don't even think we are.
I don't even think we have to vote, but if you want, I'd love. Just an update, Mr. Chairman.
Just what?
Just an update, no need to vote.
Okay, never mind.
No, wait. No, the tip.
Good. I would offer to leave him, but I think I'd have a fight on my hands, so.
I got to take him.
I think you'd have a fight, too. Question is, who are you going to leave him with?
Right.
Can I make one more comment? Chief, this is another way how BPD, we don't just, it's not just, you know.
It's very unnatural.
Law enforcement, writing tickets, it's outreach, outreach to the community. And Burlington does, Burlington Police does so much for the community. And I just hope people, you know, will follow your social media, because it's more than just, you know, cop work. It's much more than that. Law enforcement's one part of the policing umbrella, but it's that community outreach that is so crucial to get, you know, the residents and the police to work together.
Yes, thank you. And you've obviously got the buy-in from all of us, but the, you know, the work was done by Lieutenant McDonough and Officer Medico. So hats off to them, and I'm sure this program is going to be excellent going forward. So thank you again for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, good luck. Good thing I don't have. She'll get back.
Chief, do you want to take a picture with Beckett? Picture with Beckett?
Was it?
You're going to do a picture.
I'll go do a picture? I'll go as a north officer?
Take a picture.
Yeah, do we read for the seal?
Great job, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's a fundamental meeting where everyone in the room is smiling.
Yeah. Another thing, we should bring that dog every meeting. Everybody was happy.
Maybe you'd like more to support dog?
Oh, my goodness. This is a good thing. All right, discussion, Conservation Stormwater Article. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have our Conservation Director Eileen Coleman, as well as, it looks like, we have Conservation Commission members Bill Boyvin and Larry Cohen here. They were, they're presenting an article to town meeting for January, and just wanted to update the board on what that article entails.
I think you have most, please, just giving you these things.
Thank you, Eileen.
If you want to follow along.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you, Eileen.
It's a sign. But everybody has to.
No, it says, decision's time.
Okay, so, before we take a look at this table, I just want to spend one minute of our time, just giving you guys a little bit of background. So, most towns in the east of Massachusetts have to comply with an EPA permit in order to manage their stormwater systems. Burlington has an MS4 permit, that's what it's called, in order to manage their stormwater systems. And that, so EPA updates that permit every, oh, 10, 15 years, something like that. In one of the last iterations of the permit, we were required to produce a stormwater bylaw. This we did in 2007, largely written, in fact, by Larry, so that we were in compliance. At that time, this established that stormwater permits were required for certain projects, for anything that was going to disturb more than 10,000 square feet, that would get administrative permit, and anything that was going to disturb 20,000 square feet would get a standard permit with a hearing with the commission. And then, a new EPA permit came in. We were required to make some changes. In 2020, we made some changes to the bylaw that required us to go in front of town meeting just to make a couple of, sort of fairly, I mean, they were substantial, yet they were administrative changes. We decided to make some more changes in 2022, this time to the thresholds of the bylaw, and we had to go through town meeting again. It's a very involved process. As you all know, we have to go to several boards, general bylaw review committee, we have an open hearing with Conservation Commission, in which we discuss these potential changes. So what we wanted to do, what we wanted to do for a very long time, but what we finally did this year, particularly with the help of John Keely, because he had a little bit of extra time since he retired and then became our consultant, is we decided to split up this pretty complicated bylaw into a more streamlined bylaw, and then to put the rest of the details into regulations. So that's what the front page of this little handout is for you. It's a table just showing where everything went. So basically, what it's telling you is that all of the description of what is actually required under the bylaw, who the, who, under whose authority this is, what sort of thresholds and what sort of permits actually are required to get a, sorry, what sort of projects are required to get a permit, that all remains in the bylaw. Everything else, the technical details of what you would need to put into your application, that's six pages of details just to say what goes into a standard stormwater application. What goes into your plan, what goes into your stormwater plan, what goes into your erosion control plan, that's, it's many, 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 many pages of technical details. And every time we want to change something relatively minor on that, we typically have to go through town meeting. So this way, what we would do is, only those changes that are in the regulations, those technical details, would now come under the authority of the commission. We would have a hearing for any change that is involved. And those hearings, as anybody, you know, who knows our commission can attest, they typically are open for several months at a time, so that we get information from everybody. Another thing that we, we have dealt with a couple of interested townspeople who have given us a lot of input, both this time and on previous iterations of our changes. We also did add something to the regulation, the proposed regulation, should I say, which says that we would also propose to create a stormwater subcommittee anytime that we are going to make future changes to the regulations. And that subcommittee would be made up of two members of the commission, a member of staff, and up to three members of the public. And anytime we were going to make future changes, we would open it up, first of all, to that subcommittee, and then as a hearing. So, there's a, if the chair is open, I think Larry might have something to add, but I'm not sure.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for hearing about this today. Now, the, there is substantial harmful impacts from uncontrolled soil erosion and stormwater runoff. It is extremely important, this permitted program is extremely important to the town of Burlington. It prevents impairment of water quality. It prevents destruction of aquatic and wildlife habitat. It either slows or stops flooding in some cases, and it prevents erosion of stream channels, and it present, and it also prevents the overloading and clogging of the sewer system as well. So, as Eileen said, this program derives from the EPA MS4 general permit, and, which actually derives from the National Clean Water Act. And back in 2005, EPA came out with their first general permit. And it required us to develop this bylaw. And this bylaw, the general permit, EPA said, well, they came out with, said, each town can tailor their own permit program for your specific town. They said that, that you must at least have a permit program for one acre or more. But every town is doing it somewhat differently, okay? And Burlington, as you well know, most of the lots are half acre. So in order to control uncontrolled runoff, uncontrolled stormwater, uncontrolled erosion, okay, we had to have an application to our particular situation. At the same time, when I wrote this, we were very concerned about inconvenience to homeowners. And I remember at town meeting, describing to town meeting, before the bylaw was approved somewhere around 2007, that we developed a two-tiered system. We said that for lots that are disturbed, less than 20,000 square feet, we said that you can get an administrative permit. You still submit your application materials. You have to submit what you're going to do, how you're going to prevent erosion, how you're going to infiltrate on the site, and all that stuff. But then, you submit the materials, and our staff would just grant you the permit with mostly standard conditions, maybe a few specific conditions depending on the site. And then we said, so that takes care of most homeowner lot situations where a developer is building a house. And then, for the larger sites, half acre or more, we said that then you'll have, of course, the full permit. It requires a little bit more detail, it requires a full hearing, and it can go on if it's needed to, okay? And then they finally get their permit after this has been discussed back and forth over what needs to be done. So that's kind of a little bit of the history of where we are. And the thing about this permit program, it does this because for development projects and redevelopment projects, it establishes performance standards on what has to be done to keep the stormwater on site, to infiltrate the stormwater, to prevent erosion, putting up erosion barriers, what you have to do for temporary de-watering, things of that nature. So, I feel pleased, from the time I originally wrote this and it became a bylaw back in 2005, 2006 timeframe, this bylaw has contributed substantial to the environmental health of this community.
Anything?
No, anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to say a couple items. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this is to divide it, basically administratively divide it into two pieces. There's no significant changes in this current division, but one of the benefits of dividing it into a regulation that can be modified by approval of the Conservation Commission rather than coming to town meeting, is for technical changes that come up. If the 100-year storm definition changes or something like that, we can make these changes in the regulations without having to go through the whole town meeting process. And if people were concerned about perhaps frivolous changes being made, or, you know, controversial changes being made, we put in numerous safeguards in the sense that we have extensive public hearings, as was already mentioned. We formed the subcommittee, and we've already had two people express interest in being on the subcommittee. They're both prominent developers in town. They've had, both showed up at our existing hearings that we've had to develop the bylaw and now the regulations. So we are definitely including developers into our, you know, plans for this. And we did a similar process for the wetland bylaw. It has regulations, and we haven't made any changes to those in the two or three years that it's been in existence. So it's not something that we're just going to march ahead and make changes to. So I think it's an important thing to do to standardize the way we do it. Like I said, we've done it in the wetland regulations, the Board of Health does it, and then once some of their bylaws have regulations, and many, many communities have that format. And it makes the bylaws more streamlined, and makes it easier to make, you know, administrative changes as they come up.
Oh, and if you'll indulge me, one more sentence. I forgot one thing that's really important. The bylaw portion of it, there's bylaw and there's regulations. The bylaw portion of it, okay, retains the thresholds of how it applies, how it applies for no permit at all, how it applies for an abbreviated permit, and how it applies for which situations require a full permit. And so the entire application of this whole permitting program, okay, those thresholds, those thresholds would have to go before town meeting. So there, the actual application of when the permit program applies, okay, is actually in the bylaw itself, not in regulations. And town meeting would have any final say if we ever decided we were proposing a change.
If I could just add to that, that particular item of content, of having those metrics into the bylaw, was a suggestion of the developers that were at our hearing. We originally had it in the regulations, that the 10,000 square feet, 20,000 square feet, and they said that they felt that that was, if any changes to that would be so significant that it should go in front of town meeting. So we did, you know, automatically, not automatically, but we did put that into the bylaw as a revision after communicating with the interested parties that came to our hearings.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Sagrano.
Mr. Chairman and the board, I just wanted to let you know that tonight's agenda item is just an update for the board. Conservation is one of our departments. They wanted to keep you posted as to what they'll be submitting for the warrant. We're not looking for any vote here tonight, but at a later meeting prior to January, you'll be voting to create the warrant, add this warrant article onto the warrant as well. And at that point in time, you can decide whether or not you want to take a position in favor or against what's being proposed. But we're not, we're not requesting any vote from the board tonight. Informational only.
Do we have the opportunity tonight to ask a couple of questions, if the board members have that?
Of course.
Okay. So I'll start with Mr. Teggus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It says, I know in the appeals, 6.10 appeals, it has to, this is, decision's final, and they have to go to court to appeal it. So there's absolutely no way someone could bring us to the Board of Appeals to fight any of this?
No. This, this is something that has been in existence, the whole appealability, since 2007. And it's pretty standard for something like this. No, it has to go through this process.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, absolutely.
Thanks, Chairman. Eileen, when you say it has to go through this process, that's by statute, or it's just that's the way it currently exists?
That's actually a very good question. You wrote the original?
It's by statute. If someone, for example, doesn't like our decision, it's a, the bylaw, I believe, is appealable to a court of appropriate jurisdiction. I think, I think that's a statute. That's the same way with our wetlands bylaw. It would go to court to be appealed. But the state portion, the decision is usually simultaneous with the State Wetlands Protection Act, and you can go to the state for appealing that portion of a wetlands permit.
Okay.
That's a good question, though.
I'll probably have a lot more questions as I dig deeper into this. You know, I'm very curious to see how town meeting, you know, takes it. For clarity, though, Eileen, as I get into this, so the top sheet, this is just changes?
Right. And as all three of us have described, we are not changing any of the content.
Right.
Of the bylaw. We are just saying, this much is going to be in the bylaw going forward.
Yep.
All the rest will go into regulations, with some tweaks.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure that as I read it, I'm, I understand what I'm looking at.
Yep.
So then, the next one, the summary of changes made between '22 and '24, represent changes that have been approved or are being requested as a part of this change?
So, I'm trying to explain this. When John tweaked the bylaw, we did make some additions, a lot of which are going to go into the regulation, but these are additions that came, that were on top of the 2022 version.
So these are all currently proposed changes?
It does detail each one bit by bit. For example, it does say, all of the current wording of, say, part 6.0 was taken from the initial 6.2 and 6.0. This was supposed to be sort of a way of clarifying to you exactly where all the parts of the existing one came from, because in some cases, just in order to make it read better, we did move things from here to there, so that this part, so that, like, section of 6.0 now read more clearly.
Okay. And all of those adjustments are in what was provided to us in the backup as the article?
Yes.
Okay.
They are.
And the summary of source material for the proposed stormwater regulations, this is just clarity of definition and where it exists?
Exactly. You know, this was originally in this part of the bylaw. We added a sentence from here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have any exact other questions at this point. You know, I want to dive into this material, and I'll probably follow up with you separately. But in terms of it going on the warrant, like I think most things, I say, we let town meeting decide. So, you know, I don't have a necessary objection to this particular juncture.
Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I wanted to thank all of you for all of your hard work on this and looking at stormwater in town and protecting our environment. It's very important. Just, I'm a little confused or wondering about the changes from making these rules, bylaws, to regulations. We have a town meeting every four months. Has there ever been a situation where we weren't able to react to something fast enough because it was a bylaw and it wasn't a regulation?
I don't think so. We, one of the changes, the change that we made in 2020 was as a result of the last iteration of the actual EPA permit. We did have plenty of time to do that. We knew in advance exactly what, you know, when it had to happen, what our deadline was. It's not so much that town meeting has necessarily refused, but it is a very long, drawn-out process for some changes that may just be. Can you please give us two copies of the plan? And actually, we'd like to have, you know, a north compass shown on your plan, you know, really quite, these are the things that we're moving into regulations, things that town meeting, you've got, they've got kind of better things to think about, is the way I feel about it, than the minutia of what goes into an application.
Okay. Mr. Speo, if I could add to that. I did a little survey to see, just to confirm what I already knew, that what are other towns doing in this regard? 100% of all the towns that I looked at around us, all of them, and I dare say, the majority of them probably in the Commonwealth, and I would extrapolate, all do it the same way. They put the authority and oftentimes the thresholds and the enforcement part of it, the waiver portion of it, and things like that, the things that give us the authority to operate the program. And then, the details, such as, there might be specifics on, specifics relative to the rain guidance, a specifics relative to trying to encourage low-impact development, which instead of having pipes, you have similar terrain guidance to infiltrate stuff, okay, which sometimes is actually less expensive. You might have a change to the rainfall. And sometimes, I think the staff, I think this is correct, the staff gets calls where something is not clear, and we realize there's a detail that frankly, we didn't write it the most clear way, and we could clarify things of that sort. So, the truthful answer is, it can remain, okay? It's just not a particularly efficient process. There's no detriment to the overall effect on protecting environmental health in Burlington by having it remain, but it is certainly more efficient for us to make changes to technical details through a hearing process and changes in regulations than going to town meeting. And sometimes, it's even just syntax error as well. So, I mean, that's, that's the reality of it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for bringing this forward and for all the work you've done on this. I did go back and watch some of those meetings, just because this is beyond my scope. I just wanted to kind of get a sense of what you guys were talking about. One of my questions was answered by Larry, is this consistent with what other towns are doing? And it sounds like it is. It sounds like it is. And I believe you brought this to the General Bylaw Review Committee, is that correct?
We were on the agenda for the General Bylaw Review Committee, and they did not have a quorum that particular evening. So, I was hoping that maybe we could form a subcommittee, but I haven't heard from that yet, so, no, unfortunately, we haven't.
So, it was on the agenda, you didn't discuss it because there wasn't a quorum?
There was no quorum.
Okay. Okay. I was curious to know if there were any concerns raised by that committee. And so, you know, just so I'm clear, some of this language is a little, I don't know, bylaws and regulations sound like the same thing to me, to be, if I'm being honest from like a lay perspective.
Right.
They sound the same. The difference is, to make a change to a town bylaw, you have to go to town meeting, which is, can be a cumbersome process, and they only meet a few times a year. And, you know, and like you said, it can be tricky to sort of explain the nuances and intricacies and, you know, minutia, like you said.
Right.
of some of this stuff to town meeting. And so, compared to regulations, which would, you know, go through the board or the commission that's in charge of it, so that process is a little more, you know, less cumbersome, they meet more frequently, they're experts on this kind of thing. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a very good summary.
Okay. And in that respect, with the regulations and any changes, there would still be a public hearing, it would be on an agenda. And I understand that throughout this process, you've also actively reached out to key stakeholders, you know, builders in town and developers, and not just putting it on agenda and hoping people see it.
Right.
But like, just kind of actively, so I would just encourage you to keep doing that, because I think, like, the fear might be, is that, you know, without town meeting's involvement in changes like this, that too much power is given to one body to make changes that could impact residents in a big way.
Which we entirely understand, and that's why we, as Larry has eloquently described, we're leaving all of the sort of functional administrat, the who does what part in the bylaw. All we really be moving is the how you do it bit.
Okay. No, I think your explanation has been helpful. I just want, I guess I just want those concerns on record that
Yep.
I understand your intention behind this is, you know, to make these little tweaks, to make things more clear, make it not left up to interpretation and people interpreting things in different ways. But, you know, I trust Hong Kong, I trust, you know, the department, the conservation department, but, you know, you think five, 10, 20 years later, we have completely different, you know, staff, different commission, and they do want to make sweeping changes to these regulations. So, it's just something to consider to, you know, keep those concerns in mind. And in that light, I would just encourage you to keep being as transparent with the process as possible. But I completely understand the reasoning behind this, and to go to town meeting for every little tweak to these kind of things is quite cumbersome, so, but I did just want to make those concerns.
Absolutely.
I would point out, just to add to these comments, that the, at least from my perspective, the last 32 years, the Conservation Commission has developed a long history of doing things in a collaborative fashion. And what that means is that when we have had changes to our wetlands regulations, we have actually sought out the stakeholders and said, have you taken a look at this? We go to, we say, can we come before the Chamber of Commerce and tell you what we're doing? They don't ask us, we ask them, okay? So, we do have a 30-year history. It's no guarantee 50 years from now, things may, I probably won't be on the board then, I suspect, but
Maybe.
But I suspect that we do have a demonstrated history of how we do things in town.
Great. Thank you so much. And I don't know if it's appropriate, but I do believe one of the builders in town is here tonight, Susan Cadillac. I don't know if we want to, you know, finish with our comments and possibly see if she has anything to add.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. I agree with a lot of things that Sarah said about the stormwater and everything else going on with the possibility of power and stuff like that. My thought process is, why now? Why now is this important a change through town meeting and everything else? Is there something going on in town that we don't know about, or is there something that is, I just don't understand why now?
This is something that we have been thinking about for several years. I've been in the position of being Assistant Conservation Administrator and the Stormwater Coordinator for seven years in town, and I know that I've wanted to impose, create regulations, I know that I've seen drafts in our folders from years and years ago, I know that Larry wanted to create regulations. It's just something that we knew was going to be a somewhat time-consuming process. We, I'll be honest, we took advantage of the fact that John Keely was retiring and he was going to stay on as a consultant with us, and that was his first consultant project, was you take all the hours that it's going to take to actually slice these things apart.
Who has this now? Is it through engineering or is it through?
Oh, no, is this through us?
It's through you? You just want to change the bylaws?
Which wouldn't change at all, right.
Some of the bylaws that are involved there? And is it strictly stormwater, or is it going to be every single, every single house that goes up, every single?
Every single house at the moment, every single house does have to get a stormwater permit.
You're going to have some whatever control with it.
They already have. It's already, under the bylaw, every single new build does get a stormwater permit.
It's been that way since 2005, actually.
Through the conservation.
I'm just, I'm talking out of school because I don't know. That's why I'm out.
But we were very concerned about for relatively small projects defined as homeowner lots, that a standard set of permits, standard set of permit conditions with maybe a few specific ones on occasion, they don't need a full hearing, we don't have to delay the project, we don't have to charge more money, we don't have to have hearings and have it go for two or three months in order to issue a permit. So, we recognize that from the very beginning, that the homeowner permit is abbreviated permit, it's issued administratively once they submit the application.
Okay. So, another question I have is, so what we're trying to put into effect, is, does the state already have this, or is there two different laws, one for the state on what we're supposed to do for the state and one for the town, as far as stormwater goes? Is there two different?
This is
You kept saying it's all state-related and we have
This is, it's actually EPA. Massachusetts is one of the states, it's a lot of technical stuff here, has not been given the authority to manage the MS4 permit at the state level. So, it's an EPA, it is an EPA permit. So, it is, so EPA has permits for certain things, like there's a construction general permit for every type of construction that's more than one acre, there is a type of permit for all sort of industrial processes, and then there's one called the municipal separate storm sewer system, so that every town with a certain, that, whose population hits a certain threshold and who has a enclosed separate storm system, because sometimes it's combined stormwater and sewer water in some towns. So, for every town that has this separate system, they have to adhere to this permit that is administered by the EPA, and it's needlessly complicated, I have to agree.
I think, yeah, kind of complicated.
This is the permit, and this isn't even all of it. It's, there's a lot.
I won't ask you to copy that for us. All right. So, as you can see, I guess there's a lot of questions to be asked about this before we go, and it's all from a discussion. Susan's up there, she's one of the builders in town. You have any comments on this, Susan, or something? I'm assuming you've already talked to them at this point.
There you go.
Just trying to grasp my head around exactly what's going on with this whole thing.
Yeah, I think it's hard, because when people hear stormwater and conservation and the MS4 permit and the EPA, they're like, ah, okay. Right? Your head just kind of gets lost. So, I think the important things to know about this is, you know, Larry's right, a lot of towns do have part of it in regulation, part of it in the bylaw. We are a little unusual in that the stormwater is being implemented through conservation. In most towns, it's DPW or engineering or public works. So, I think when people hear conservation, they might think, oh, I don't have conservation, this doesn't affect my law. But it's important to note that these changes affect every single property in town. And, I mean, Eileen's been great, Larry's been great, Bill's been great, and we've been having these conversations, but I just feel like we need a little bit more time to kind of deep dive into them, because there are things like, you know, on the proposed regulations, you know, that they can require tree replacement and tree preservation, which, you know, that may be a change, that people say, wait a minute, I didn't know a tree bylaw went in. And if those go into regulations, that can be changed without going in front of town meetings. So, I think we just need a little bit more time to dive into what parts go into the regulation, what parts go into the bylaw. And, you know, the threshold was one thing that I was very concerned about going into regulation. And when I brought it up, no hesitation, they were like, you know what, that makes sense, maybe that needs to, you know, maybe that should stay in the bylaw. So, you know, I think it's been, we've only had one meeting so far, but I think it's, you know, it's been productive, but I think there's just more things to dive into, think about the impact, how does this impact every property owner in town, and what does it, what does it mean? Because it's a very boring topic, it's very complicated, it's very, you know, people say, you know, okay, stormwater, yeah, I don't want, I don't want water in my yard, I don't want water in my basement, but when you start getting into the details, they're like, you know, it's just, it's just tough to swallow sometimes. So, I think getting into those details and really making sure that we understand what the impact is, is important.
Okay. One quick question, Susan, are you sitting on that board right now with these questions that come?
Yes.
You are on it?
Yes.
Okay, good. I like that.
[laughing]
That's good. Are there any other questions from the board? No? Mr. Segreano, anything?
Could I just add one comment, which is
Sure.
just partly in response to what Susan said. All of what she said is correct. I'm not disagreeing with anything she says, only that the part that's going to town meeting is whether or not they are happy for us to have this streamlined bylaw. The regulations are not yet set in stone. We are still discussing what exactly is going to go into the regulations. I think it's actually a really big boost, for just want to have a better word, that what we added in about having the subcommittee, I mean, we've actually written that into the proposed regulations right now, that we will actually meet as a subcommittee. So, the, this, what's going in front of town meeting right now would say, yes, this is the bylaw, and there will be regulations. Regulations are not definite yet. They're draft.
Question on that?
Right.
So, Eileen?
We do have draft ones, but they're still
So, it's town meeting's job to approve the bylaw?
Right.
But they, they don't have any say in the regulations?
They don't have any say in the regulations, but we wanted to get it to a good point where town meeting can see, oh, this is what they're doing.
Okay.
So, you know what I mean?
Yep.
We intend to submit the regulations as backup.
Backup, okay.
To the bylaw proposal.
But it's not 100%, it's not set in stone right yet.
Okay.
Just one more quick comment. I mean, I think, I think, I think it's important to have, you know, to have that in a good state, because, you know, as, you know, you said, why now? There really is no rush. I mean, Burlington's in compliance right now. These particular changes are not, you know, as a result that we have to, that we're not in compliance or, you know, anything like that. So, it's not like if this were to take a little bit more time, it wouldn't have any effect on Burlington being in compliance.
Okay, great. Well, I can't thank you enough for your time. I mean, I just learned a lot about stormwater. I don't know if I'll have a test on it later, but
Thank you very much.
Only need is a storm.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. Where am I? Approval, general license. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up is a new general license for Class II Raj Auto Sales LLC.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good.
Just introduce yourself and
Yes.
Background on
I'm sorry, repeat that again.
Could you just introduce yourself and just tell us a little bit about the business you're
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. I'm coming to open the license for the dealer, buy car and sell car for the auction, to auction. Used car.
A new car?
Used car, yes.
Used cars for an auction?
Yeah.
Okay. And where will this be located at?
My located?
Location?
Oh, my location is in 115, 1500 Burlington, District Avenue, Burlington, my office.
Lynn, you have all the paperwork on that?
It's all online.
Online?
Online.
It's like a commercial area?
Yeah.
District down.
District.
Over the district. Okay, we'll start with questions. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The sale's mostly done online, right? You do a lot of your work online?
Yes, the online or go to auction, go to auction too. I bid online and go to auction too, the both, yeah.
Do you have any cars stored near the, at the office?
Oh, no.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I was writing. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was kind of my question as well. So, you purchase the cars via auction, and then they go up for, they're never stored at your, they just go from auction to auction?
Yes, they carry car, they store, they car, they, to auction, to auction, they tow, tow.
Okay.
Yeah. They auction to auction, they transportation, they carry car, yes.
For you, okay.
Yeah.
That was my only question. Thank you.
Okay.
No, I don't think I have any questions. This is the, Leonard, my eighth, ninth, if approved tonight, and then not the only one at this location, correct? Isn't there another one that we approved for the district?
Another one in the district, yeah.
Right?
I thought so, in the district.
Yeah, that rings a bell. Okay. Yeah, I have no, no questions on this.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've given prior licenses, Class II licenses, to people at their residence, where they don't have to rent an office. I'm just curious, why would you need to rent an office? I'm assuming the rent in the district is probably not cheap, so why rent an office when you could simply run this from your house?
Yes, because I have a child. In my house, I'm not able to doing that in my house, because I child too many noise. But when I'm doing the paper, some is located, just evacuate, at the killed children, too much noise in my house, because they, when is on like, they are there, you know, it's not to close the, when the office, no, no, no children, because the office supposed to be like, close the house, my house.
Okay.
Yes.
All set.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this point, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Class II license for RAG Auto Sales LLC.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, against, 500. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck with everything.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The next is a public hearing. So, I will open the public hearing at this point, transfer a license.
And accept a notice?
What's that?
Accept a notice is printed?
Accept a notice is printed, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept a notice is printed? Second.
Motion made and seconded, it's printed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, against, 500. Gentlemen. Go ahead. For Josh.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's attorney Courtney Ball from Ball Law Office located in Derry, New Hampshire. And I'm here representing Sam Ritty Delight. Sam Ritty Delight is a small four-person corporation that is run from relatives and with deep restaurant experience. They just purchased a restaurant assets and are running a restaurant named Aroma Delight down at 184 Cambridge Street. The restaurant currently has a wine and malt beverages license, and we're seeking a transfer of the license and a change of category to all alcoholic beverages. Sam Ritty Delight is run, the most important player here. I did have, actually have the secretary try to, try to get in on the, on the online portal here, but was, was unable to join the meeting. To my right here is Sergeant Singh. He's the president of the corporation. He's, we're seeking approval from the board to have him appointed the manager of record for the alcohol purposes. In the back, I have Madon Singh. He's the vice president and the treasurer of the corporation, and he has a restaurant currently in Cambridge. So he has a very, a lot of experience running a restaurant. He's done that for 15 or 20 years. And certainly, it's not going to be a drinking establishment. It's a restaurant. It's an Indian food restaurant, very good, and just serving alcoholic beverages as ancillary to that meal. Certainly, we understand, you know, that the restaurant is a, is a, you know, a privilege granted from the town, subject to rules of the town and alcohol licensing server regulations as well from the town. So I have briefed my clients on some of the basics here, and we're certainly going to dig in and get very specific with what exactly needs to be done as far as, you know, registration with the police department, et cetera, and establishing some good procedures to keep everything in order. So happy to answer any questions you may have. As one last thing, is that, you know, Sergeant, the president here, the manager of record, has a fair amount of experience managing, assistant managing restaurants. And so currently, the restaurant is open. It has, the common VIX been granted, all, all the permits, other than the alcohol permit. There is no alcohol in the restaurant. There has not been. The prior owner had a beer and wine license, but never actually purchased alcohol. Kind of just held it as a placeholder for the quota system if that, if that was in effect. But, and we're happy to answer any of us questions you may have.
Okay. Nick, we'll start with you.
I don't know where I want to start.
Beginning.
You sure? Not the end? So, so we're asking for a change of license from beer and wine to all alcohol?
To all alcohol, correct.
Okay.
And then, of course, you know, appointment of the manager, which is ancillary to that. There's no changes to the floor plan or anything like that. Really, just a new, new restaurant, new business name, Aroma Delight. And ultimately, it.
Okay. And when, and this might be a silly question, but when, when the business changed hands, why wasn't the request made then for the license?
Well, actually, we were on the last hearing, but it turned out at the last minute, I was waiting to pay the bill for the publication, and that the newspaper actually failed to publish the advertisement. So we got pushed back.
Okay, that's right. I do remember that. Okay. Okay. Yeah, no further questions right now.
Sarah?
I don't have any questions. The application looked fine to me.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will all the employees be tip certified, serving alcohol?
So the plan is, is about five employees. Three are, are pretty much stuck in the kitchen. So any employee on the floor will be tip certified. Currently, Sergeant's tip certified, Madonna's tip certified, obviously along with the, you know, the food service protection, the allergen awareness and the, and the choke prevention. But any employee that is not strictly a kitchen employee will be tip certified.
So the other three employees in the back won't be involved in any transactions involving alcohol?
That's correct.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Lynn, any, is all the paperwork filed? Everything's good to go with this? Okay. I'm looking for Mr. Tigas to come back, and I see he's coming in. I'll ask him if he has any questions.
I did want to provide.
I think, I apologize if I missed it, but did the subcommittee have a discussion?
Nope.
I have a question on that. Are you typically involved in, do you, for every establishment requesting a license, does it typically go through the?
We usually, new requests, right? New requests, so this is kind of a transfer, so.
Existing beer and wine, you're asking for a change to the floor?
And you don't?
We didn't have a meeting on this, so.
No, because it's a transfer.
So, no, we did not.
All right. No real questions, other than, you know, it's nice to see the town center still trying to stay, you know, alive with new businesses. I've heard a lot of good things about previous restaurants, Almeida, and I'm just assuming it's just going to continue to be a good place.
One of my favorite restaurants. I hope this, I hope the board will take advantage of it and help support the small business. But yeah, just, you know, obviously, any, any business nowadays is, you know, it's a challenge. You got to, you got to work at it. And the previous owner was, lived, lived in Tewksbury and had an opportunity to get closer to his house. So that was the impetus behind.
So just a comment, kind of follow up on what I said earlier about the police department and community outreach, outreach. We have a very vibrant community. We have several events throughout the year. We have the Taste of Burlington. We have a huge Di Vali event on the common. We have Celebrate Burlington. Just let, if you're, the owners aren't aware, we'd love to see them get involved in the community. You know, we're a very diverse town, and we'd like to just celebrate the diversity.
Oh, it's, it's very welcome. Thank you. And I'll make sure that, you know, to connect with the appropriate town board to get in, you know.
Just talk to economic development director, and she can say you in the right direction.
Fantastic.
All set, Mr. Chairman?
You all set? Nick, you had a follow up?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess just, this is more a technicality thing. So this is, this is a change of license from beer and wine to all. I know I said that already, so bear with me. My question is, that is like getting a new license, is it not?
The way we have to file it, part of the state is considered a transfer with a change of category. It's not considered new.
Transfer with change of?
Yes, they're transferring from Almeida to the new location their beer and wine. But they want to change the category from beer and wine to all alcohol. If that's how they have us to do it, they do not consider it new.
Interesting. Okay.
And it doesn't, sorry to interrupt. And it doesn't cut into our quota. It still stays that number of licenses in town.
You have so many in the town center, it's just taking a different spot in the town center of all alcohol. So it's a change, you know, how many, obviously, one less, but we have plenty.
Okay.
And that was my next question was?
One less all alcohol, one more beer and wine.
And do we happen to have that count on hand?
No.
No, I should have asked ahead of time. I didn't think of it.
Yeah.
We'll get that out to you tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine. All right. Thank you, both. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the board? No? Well, I got my questions answered. I don't have to even ask any. So everything got answered for me. I just want you to know that the new, the new beer and wine license, we do take the alcohol very serious and down, just so they understand that. The tip certified, registered with the police department, all that kind of stuff. So when they do come out, they come out. Who knows when it's going to be? We don't even know. Just want you to realize that it's, the underage serving is tough. Don't want it to go anywhere but positive. All right? So that's where I am.
Sounds like a plan.
And at this time, yes.
Public hearing, sir?
Yep. Oh, no. I was getting to that. Okay. So right now, we'll go to the public hearing. If there's anybody on the audience or online that would like to ask a question or speak about this, raise your hand online. Or I see nobody in the room wants to say anything? No? John, anybody online?
No.
Okay.
They can motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, against, five, zero, zero. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the transfer of liquor license and change of category, change of manager from Almeida to Sam Ritty, 184 Cambridge Street.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, five, zero, zero. Congratulations.
Good luck.
All the best.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Okay, now, moving forward. Discussion approval, Wellesley Ave. Is somebody here? Oh, Wellesley Ave.
I'm actually, yeah, I'm, I'm online.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the select board. I don't know if you can hear me. I hope you can.
We can.
Oh, I think, oh, perfect. Thank you. I'd first like to apologize for not being there in person. I'm coming back from Jamaica with a layover in JFK. I did try to move my flights, though it was more complicated than I realized. So I appreciate your flexibility. I do understand that my neighbors are there in person in support of this appeal, so I send my gratitude and appreciation for them. But I first, I'd like to introduce myself. First and foremost, my husband and I are new to Burlington, Massachusetts. I'm Kearney Fulton. My husband is Timothy Fulton. We didn't come far. We're, we're from Revere, Massachusetts. So, so again, not too far, but we relocated to 15 Wellesley Avenue back in April. You're probably familiar with the address. For those of you who are in Burlington PD, I see some of you in the audience. I'll take this moment to, again, apologize for the many calls that probably came from me and some of my neighbors, and extend my gratitude for your service. But others may be familiar with the address because it's the last house before the entrance to the Mill Pond Reservation Trails. And beer and wine is our challenge. Turns out, everybody loves the trail and the pond, we, ourselves included. It was the main reason why we bought the place. We have guests from surrounding neighborhood towns coming down to use the amenity, which is fantastic. Except there are those who are very bold and believe that they're allowed to park anywhere they want, including in front of a hydrant. Yes, I have had to tell many, many people that parking in front of a hydrant is against the law, believe it or not. I'll get to that later. But when we moved into our home, there had been no parking anytime signs across our driveway and all the way up to Wellesley Avenue. Since then, we've seen signs that have been taken down, backed up throughout the entrance to the trails, taken back down. And now what's up is the sign that says no parking, dusk till dawn. I've since reached out to multiple departments in town to understand what the signs really are supposed to be. And it turns out that back in 2012, the select board has approved no parking anytime sign on Wellesley from Peach Orchard Road until the intersection of Robin Street, but no parking from dusk till dawn from Robin intersection all the way to the end of Wellesley Avenue. Unfortunately, when this decision was made, my house and my driveway did not exist, and I can't speak for the old owner, but this has caused many problems to myself and my husband, including, from what I understand, my neighbor in 1 Robin Street. We've had instances when people would park in front of our driveway, which caused issues. We had our trash missed one time because someone parked in front of our driveway. It, it got to a point where our, a truck or a, a trash driver who were, who was a kind of a taking over from another one, forgot that there was a house down the road, and I've had to call three different times to get our trash picked up. I've had to escalate this DPW because it got to a point where literally I was calling every week to get our trash picked up. And more recently, our propane tank couldn't get filled. They've tried three times on three different days, because fall seems to be a very popular time for visitors. And again, people like to park in front of our driveway. I'm not asking for a complete parking ban on Wellesley Ave. I know that's unrealistic, and I know our friends from the conservation land would not like that. I'm merely asking for the no parking anytime to be extended past Robin Street all the way up in front of 15 Wellesley Ave. This would significantly reduce the issues that we faced recently. Again, thank you for your time, and I will now invite my neighbors who are there in person to add anything that I've missed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Are there neighbors here?
Please.
Oh, no. I'm, I'm, I'm asking, you come up. Yeah, thank you. I'll head from basketball after.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board. My name's Valerie Bono Bunker. I'm resident of 1 Robin Street. I purchased the property back in 2012 for the reason that Kearney did and her family and many others in the neighborhood because of the reservoir, walking dogs, trails, peace, quiet, calm. And it's really changed since then, probably from the pandemic. But I did, I did mail this to you, email this to you earlier today. If you mind, would I be able to read it? Is that okay? Thanks. Since COVID, the pan, since the pandemic, the popularity of the reservoir has surged, and what was a peaceful residential neighborhood has now become a busy, busy as a public beach. We are regularly seeing people park in front of our homes, unloading swimming floats, coolers, and other recreational equipment and spending the day at the reservoir, which is not allowed by the, per the Mill Pond map description and rules from 2022 and on our town's website. While we welcome visitors to our community, the influx of non-resident vehicles, increased congestion with cars often parked right along the edge of our property, blocking our driveways. This obstruction acts to access our own vehicles makes it difficult to exit our driveway, causing issues with essential services like trash collection, oil delivery, and packaging. Furball, further complicating the issue, Google Maps, All Trails app, and our own Burlington website has listed Wellesley Avenue as the designated parking lot for the Mill Pond Trail. However, this location is neither sufficient for the volume of visitors nor safe for the pedestrians and dogs that surround it. With so many cars concentrated in a small area, with only one way to exit and enter, and yesterday I spent two and a half minutes videotaping an Amazon truck trying to just turn around in our neighbor's driveway because there were cars parked along the side. I happened to be at the top of the hill trying to get into my driveway and waited patiently. Additionally, our neighborhood's narrow roads pose further safety concerns due to the speeding vehicles, particularly by non-residents visiting the reservoir. Cars frequently speed through the intersection of Wellesley and Robin, which is a T-intersection, which makes it especially dangerous by a gradual curve and a hill with overgrown trees. Wellesley Avenue is 25 feet wide, as well as Robin Street. Just past my house, it turns into 14.3 feet. My truck is seven feet, eight feet with rear view mirrors, which makes it nearly impossible for any car to pass by if I was to park in the now labeled dusk till dawn parking. These dimensions are far too narrow to safely support both parked cars, let alone speeding vehicles. Despite our efforts to seek consistent support for long-term solution, we've been no, no left, with no left choice but to call the police department, which is the last thing I want to do about parking. And I hesitate every time that this happens because I don't want to waste their time, but I can't get to work on many occasions. I do have, in the email that I sent earlier today, was a few suggestions that I had. I'm no, you know, I am a cannoli maker and a hockey coach, so I'm not saying that I'm a professional parking registration person. However, I do have some ideas that could solve the problem. And when I saw that the road was being newly paved, and then our neighbors had purchased the house, I was hopeful that a long-term solution could be provided, but it hasn't yet. So I won't waste your time with my suggestions. You have them in your email. But all I'm hoping for is that we can return back to a safe and sort of measured and organized parking environment at the bottom of the hill, so we can all enjoy being there. My neighbor and I are reprimanded many times from people visiting, saying, you know, don't call the police, or, you know, get away from my vehicle, or all these different types of things. And we just kind of want it to go back to the peaceful environment it was before, when we moved in. If you have any questions, I certainly am happy to answer them. I also have video and photos of cars parked, not for any other reason than just to show you how many cars can be there at one time, rain, snow, shine. They're there all the time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All set?
Stay right there.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the board for having me here today. So Wellesley Ave has been a problem area for, I think, as long as I've been on the police department. We do constantly go down there for parking complaints. And when you go down there, you see why. For a time, there were just no parking anytime signs. There were within that area. The builder, who I believe built Kearney's house, had called us and asked us to have some more signs put up, and that the sign that was there was, was no longer visible. So it appears that the signs that went up were the actual accurate signs that aren't dawn till dusk. That being said, I think it only makes sense to make the whole road no parking anytime. I think keep the consistency there, and the expectation is set. I see no reason why it can't be especially. I see no reason why it can't be, especially due to the, the, the narrow design of the roadway. There is a small parking lot at the, not parking lot, but it seems like there's a more appropriate parking area at the end of Wellesley Ave. That would make sense to keep it dawn till dusk and keep it to that small number of vehicles down there. But I think if you keep the whole road as no parking anytime, makes it easier for us to enforce. It's very clearly, it would be very clearly posted down there, and with a clear posting and a clear expectation of what's expected. You know, we certainly do encourage the residents to call us, we don't want you to confront them, just that's what we're here for, right? So we're more than happy to go down there and, and enforce the parking violations that are down there. Give us a call, don't, you know, if we start confronting some of these people, then, you know, obviously tensions can rise, and, and I think we might be more better equipped to handle scenarios like that than maybe, maybe a resident that's, that's kind of vested in the area. So it'll just make it easier for us when we go down there to, to, to enforce any type of violation. So we're, we're in support of whatever the board wants to do, you know, we'll certainly enforce whatever laws are put in place, but I do see the residents' point, and I do agree with them that no parking anytime for the entirety of the roadway, except for the very end, I, I think would make sense.
Okay, thank you. We have conservation, may call up there, is that a designating parking spot down the end down there with those four spaces in between the trees?
I think so.
Is it, is it, is it, is it on, is it on the map that, that's a designated?
I actually can pull up our map and it does show the designated parking area, because you say the, the three spots down there. Well, I definitely wouldn't want to lose those, but I also, funnily enough, I usually stole out of her bits from both one Wellesley, 15 Wellesley, and one Robin, and it is, it is very tight.
Oh, I was down there today, yeah.
Yeah, I would, if I may, one of the things about the parking signs, when we noticed that it went from back and forth between different parking signs, people will park anyway. They're pretty brazen. They parked in my very expensive driveway with my apron that I had to put in because of conservation, asking for stormwater runoff. They park up on my sidewalk, they park in front of our driveway. The way I was thinking is, what we don't want to do is cause the people that are not going to park down there not to park up in front of our houses or on Wellesley and Robin, so I was thinking residence only up top and then down below a fire lane. I mean, nobody's going to park on a white painted fire lane sign.
Well, I'll tell you what, what, what I've got to suggest to the board, and then we'll go from that point on. We've gone through this before, myself, Mr. Tigas, Sergeant Bascharoon, we've gone down this, but we've gone out to the site a couple times, and gone with, I think it was just us at the time, and then I've gone with a bunch of other town administrative people that, we went to a different area and put up no parking signs in different areas. So I'm going to ask the board questions, but, or if they have any questions. So I'd like to do that, first of all, go down there with you, and walk, and then figure out a date that we can all just, just walk very quickly, take 20 minutes to do that, to look at the, to look at where the conservation is, where those parking spots are.
I would, I would be happy to show you around, I work from home, so I'm-
You can speak when, as soon as I'm done, I'll let you get right in there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. So I'd like to do that with you, when you have, when we can, we can all meet and get a time together.
Sure.
I think that that's the best way to look at it. I was down there today, the four spots that are in between the trees, I'd like to keep those where they are, with the sign dusk till dawn, that's the option. And at that point, I would go to my board, we've done this together before, I don't-
I think Ms. Fulton needs some-
She has to mute herself.
Ms. Fulton, mute yourself, because you're getting, all right. So just a couple of things, as Ms. Morandi said, we've done this on several locations, we've had some good luck with it, we've done site visits. Just on a couple of things, we don't put speed bumps in. We, I mean, the ones on Fox Hill were put there when I was a kid, and they've just stayed there. Residents only, I res, I'm a resident in Burlington. Does that mean I can't park on Wellesley? It's, it's, I'm just saying, it can be ambiguous to have it residents only, and very difficult to enforce. If we do no parking, that means it applies to everyone. So if you have relatives or friends visiting, that means they can't park there either. I have a site visit, and the reason I bring those up is we went down to B Street, B Street was a problem. There was a school there, a swimming school, there was daycare, and if we had done what was requested, we would have shifted the problem to the next street over. So I think the site visit is great, because I don't want to shift this to Robin Street, Mayflower, so we might want to look at enlarging the area. But then again, that has to apply to everybody, it can't be, you know, you can, you can, you can't. It's got to be all or nothing. So I think, I'd love to do that site visit, and I don't want to shift the problem, maybe if it's no parking in a big area, but again, that's going to impact the residents of that, of those streets. So I, I second Ms. Morandi's idea of doing a site visit.
Mr. Tigas, just to, just to follow up, you're absolutely correct. Doing things like residents only and putting certain criteria to the parking down there is just going to make it difficult for us to enforce.
Right.
So just to kind of enforce what you just said, that is going to become an ambiguous area, and maybe something that we need to discuss when we do the site visit, but it will apply to everybody if we do a no parking anytime. I'm not sure how that affects the other residents, or the other residents feel on that, so I'm not sure if they want to be involved in the conversation also, but we'll just keep that in mind, and I'm not sure if you'd, you'd want to start reaching out to some residents and maybe see how they feel, how they feel about it, that's, that's maybe a good process to go down before, before we come in.
Just to enforce it, it has to be enforceable, so you can't make it a gray area. You can't have the police go down there and run in place to see if-
No, the, the, excuse, the, the residents only I meant was at the top of the hill, so we weren't displacing the issue from the bottom to the top, like you mentioned. It was residents only on Wellesley, Robin, and Mayflower, because that's where people from Connecticut, New York, you know, you, you could pull any one of them, nobody's from Burlington going there. There are, but I would venture to say there's less than 25% of people from Burlington visiting the reservoir.
But just to make it enforceable, it has to be black and white, it can't be a gray area, because there are legal issues, say if the police run a, write a ticket or, or whatever, and find the plates unregistered, then they tow it. That could lead to legal issues down the road, because were the police legally authorized to be there, why did they tow it, they, you know, it wasn't a motor vehicle stop, was it a criminal offense? So it, it has to be this all or nothing approach, and that's all I'm saying, but then I'd love to go down there and take a look. And we've, we've resolved issues before like this, and they're working. So I think we can come up with something, I just don't know that answer tonight. All set, Mr. Chairman?
Thanks, Chairman.
Thanks, Chairman. I agree, that, I mean, this is, this is, this must be an absolute pain for y'all down there. It would, this would drive me nuts, if, you know, I had, you know, propane or, or oil not being able to be delivered, if I couldn't, you know, get it out of my driveway, you know, I'd be, I'd be popping cars in the neutral and pushing them into, into the grass.
I didn't hear anything.
If you hear any cars rolling on Proud East, stop me, I promise. You know, that, that would, that would drive me bananas, and, you know, I can understand, you know, in hindsight, why, you know, back in 2012 or whatever it was, why this wasn't included, because obviously back then it wasn't that big of a problem, people wanted to keep it open for, you know, the extra offhand car to park down there, you know, but it, it's, it's clearly a problem, and the road is too narrow, and, and God forbid, you know, a, a fire truck had to get down there, emergency vehicle had to get down there, and we couldn't, right? You know, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't want to see that. But I do agree with Chairman Morandi and Selectman Tigas that, you know, I don't want to displace the problem someplace else without taking a look at the whole thing, and trying to solve the problem holistically, right? I think that that would be the best course of action, knowing that, from my seat at least, something needs to be done. Let's just at least aim to do it right, so that we minimize the problem and, and make sure that we have as much enforcement as possible, you know, from a police standpoint. So, you know, I mean, I'm happy to make time, although I know my schedule is, is all ghetto, if you guys can get down there, Sergeant Bascharoon, and take a look, you know, as soon as possible, so maybe we can look at this at our next meeting. I wouldn't want to drag this out personally. I'd, I'd like to get a, a resolution as quick as possible. You know, so I, I support that course of action. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm in agreeance with my fellow board members that something has to be done, and going down and taking a look, and kind of solving it the right way, whether we have to make it more than just Wellesley. My, my question is, on those three or four spots at the end of the street, just throwing this out there, would there be a possibility we could limit those to, like, max of two hours? Because I don't like the idea of people just rolling down there with coolers and spending the day down there, and if you do something like that, then more people will get the opportunity to use those spots. But again, of course, the question of enforcement comes in, how do we do that, who's running the clock? You know, I don't want, you know, Kearney to be out there with a stopwatch all day, I just, I just would love to see a solution where more people get to use those spots and don't become free-for-alls at dawn with some guy with a cooler, I don't, and I don't like anyone, I don't like the idea of anyone hanging up the rez for the cooler all day, just a thought.
Sure. We can, we can do whatever, whatever the board decides, if you want to do two-hour parking down there, we'll, we'll find a way to make it work, but again, that's something that we can evaluate during the site visit and, and have that, have that discussion. I am being told there's another, another neighbor here that'd like to talk, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if that's something that he'd like.
I'm going to watch, change around, Sarah, you have any questions?
All set, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'll just say, I'm very familiar with this neighborhood. I lived on Peach Orchard, right at the top of the Wellesley, for 10 years or so, so I would often walk down Wellesley, and I'm very familiar with that road. It's incredibly narrow, it almost seems like it gets narrower as you get down closer to the rez. And yeah, I would often see cars up and down that road, so I'm very familiar with the problem. I wish we could have more parking down there, not a lot of spots. I, I don't know who this is a question for, I was actually surprised to hear that that is on our website as an option for parking, just because there's so little parking down there. Is the, is the water treatment plant on Winter, Winter Street on our website as well as an option for parking?
That's where I tell people to go when they ask me.
I didn't, I don't know if that's just like on the down low.
Yeah, it is.
It's on there?
It's on the, it's on the Mill Pond Conservation, Conservation area, so if you look at it, yeah, yeah, there's four spots.
Because that seems like an area that, I mean, is much more feasible to potentially expand for more parking than down at Wellesley. It's so tight down there. And I know the spots are, I mean, limited at the water treatment plant as well, so, but there's, I feel like there's space there that, that we could expand. I don't know what the, what the limits are, but maybe part of the site visit could be looking at that. Other than that, I'm, I'm in support of the no parking anytime up at the bottom of Wellesley, just as is described here, so I empathize with you all.
All right, thank you. You just introduce yourself and bring that mic a little bit closer.
My name's Monica Chamberlain, and I live at the intersection of Robin and Wellesley, just above both of these neighbors. I really, you've discussed everything, so there's really not more to add. We see everything they see, we've lived there for over 35 years, and it really has only been a problem, definitely increased since 2020, and it also seems, I know it's on all trails maps, you know, it's also there as a parking place to go, so I don't know if that's also been the increase. So yeah, I have a little concern, because I have a large family, and we park on the side of the road, so if you made it completely no parking, we'd be kind of stuck sometimes when our family is all over. So I, I liked the idea of residents only on the top, where, you know, from Robin up, because maybe then my family could park there, but I understand your, your issue there. And I guess speeding's a bit of a problem, they do really race up the hill and down the hill, so that's another concern, and my other concern was they often block the entrance to the reservoir, and if there was an emergency, the cars block the way. And I, I just wanted to say that there is a large group of people that do there regularly, they're dog walkers, or kids fish there, I see that a lot, so not everyone's down there to party, and I think the two-hour limit might be really good for that, because a lot of these people are in and out in an hour, they walk it and they leave. And I know those people would hate to see the spots gone completely, but I go every day, and so I see the morning crowd, and what, the, those problems are not the morning people, they're the afternoon and evening people. So thanks for listening, it really wasn't anything new.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Online, you had a question earlier?
Yes, you all hear me, I apologize for the background noise, I didn't realize it was so loud, and I apologize for, for interrupting before, but I also just wanted to, to just kind of reiterate, I, you know, right now, there's a no parking anytime at the top of the hill. Really, our, our, our issue stemmed from the fact that we have no sign right in front of our driveway, and also, again, to Val's point, people are getting really, really brazen and, and bold, they're parking in front of a hydrant, they're parking, you know, where they shouldn't be parking, and it's, 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 it's the common very much of an issue, and we've gotten into a couple of instances where Sergeant actually had to, to talk to a resident, because we've gotten into a verbal disagreement, that's a friendly word for it, because, you know, Burlington residents are now blaming us for this, and I, I hate to be the bad guy, but really, I, I'm only asking to be able to get basic services here, my propane tank filled, my trash be packed up, my, my packages be delivered, and, you know, and every time we go out, there are neighbors who aren't supposed to be parked where they are, giving us the death pliers and blaming us for, you know, for not being able to park there, and it's, I do agree that things need to be consistent across the board, and I, I just appreciate your, your listening to, to our problem, and again, I, I work from home, so whenever you'd like to do a site visit, I'd be more than happy to show you around. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so at this point, this is, um, why don't you guys get in touch with Mr. Bascharoon, and get in touch with us, and we'll set a, we'll set a, a day that we can all meet at whatever time is convenient for everybody, and then we'll walk the area like we did last time, like we did behind Sammy's and on B Street, and the other place across the street there, we did that, and we'll look at it, we'll discuss all about no parking anytime, we'll discuss dusk to dawn parking, and we'll discuss residents only parking, and we'll figure out what, what we think the best course of action to take. We'll come back to the board, and hopefully by next month, we can approve to new, new signs to go up, and it will be all taken care of. Yes, sir?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let the board know that we did notify 40 neighbors within 300 feet of 15 Wellesley about the, that you would be discussing this this evening, and our next meeting is November 18th, so depending upon, November 18th, so depending upon how quickly the board wanted to meet with the neighbors, that would be the next opportunity for the board to vote on changing the sign, so.
Okay. The one, one question I have is, Mr. Keen was involved last time we did this, or one of them, down behind Sammy's, or on the other side of Sammy's, do we need to bring him into it, or do we need to bring Tom, do we need to bring Tom Hayes?
Whoever you like, Tom Hayes would probably be the, the one more in tune with the signs.
Okay, so Tom Hayes, one second, Michael, Jimmy.
Just wanted to make the residents aware that even if we make this decision sooner than later, because of the way the ground freezes, you might not see those signs go up for a while, so it, it, I mean, we could decide on this next week, but it may not happen as fast, and it's only because of the logistics as far as the ground being frozen, you have to print the sign, order the signs, so it's not going to be, it's not going to happen overnight, but it, something's going to happen, I think.
Okay. Michael?
So on the site visit, where will we park?
I was going to say the same thing.
Carpool.
Listen, I let that one go. I think what we're going to do is, we're going to, we're going to go to the station, Mr. Bascharoon will drive us down there, then we can park anyplace we want.
We needed some levity in this room.
We'll just get the drone out.
Oh, we could do that, yeah, hop on the back of the motorcycle.
There you go.
For a spin.
Which one of us? Okay, so let's all figure out when we, when we can do that, and we'll go down there and check it out and go from there, okay? All right.
Bring the puppy when you come.
My puppy? I'll bring my puppy down, I got a five-month-old.
Thank you to the board.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Citizens' time. Citizens' time. Who is here on Citizens' Time? Raise your hand, come on up. Come on right up.
Thank you, everybody. I just want to bring these up to you.
Sir, could you just please sign in and sit down?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
So, uh, Citizens' Time.
Okay, thank you for having. My name is John Hickey. I live at 10 Sarah Street. I'm a over 60-year resident of Burlington lifelong. In fact, I know a number of you on the board, so thank you for the time tonight. I'm coming about, you have two pictures in front of you, so I just wanted you to get a sense of what I'm talking about here. So I've lived on Sarah Street my whole life, over 60 years. It's a beautiful neighborhood in the Fox Hill area. That, there was a tear-down done next door to me and that house was built. Several select, select board members have been out to see it. And unfortunately, I think the direction the town is starting to go in is one where we're seeing a lot of homes being replaced by, for lack of a word, McMansions. And there are a lot of younger families that are, you know, aren't able to even afford to buy a town anymore. It's the nature of the beast, I understand that. But my concern is when I, when my neighborhood saw this house go up, as you can see, there's one of the pictures you have, there's a house across the street. The word I would use is jaw-dropping. That word has been used by every person, including formal commissions and boards members from this town who, who have come out to the property to see it. It is an office condominium building as far as my neighbors, family, friends, town officials that have come out, and it's, it's built there. So it has ruined the character and aesthetics of a neighborhood where people like myself have lived for over 60 years. I know you can't necessarily regulate people's taste, but my concern is where are we going as a town with this? What I'm hoping we can do as a town and as a town government is to take a much closer look at what we're doing to our neighborhoods, the character of our neighborhoods, the feasibility and affordability for younger families to come in. And what I'm hoping can happen is I've met with the Conservation Commission multiple times about other issues around this property, as Ailee can attest to, she's right behind me. But also Larry Cohen, who's been on the board for 30 years, is in full agreement that some changes need to be made. I met with the planning board, I came to public session with the planning board and they're amenable to working with the select board. I've called and spoken to several select board members, including the chair, about looking into some bylaw revisions and/or additions for the future of this town. I know we have basic bylaws around like 15-foot setbacks and 30 feet in height, et cetera. But I reached out to Bedford. So Bedford, for example, they have a mini two-year plan putting into effect. They've hired a consultant, they're doing public surveys, public comment time around open space, commercial space, and the aesthetics and character of what's being, what's going on in residential neighborhoods moving forward for the future. They also have an architect on their zoning board of appeals for non-conforming properties to discuss and look at and say like, hey, this is not going to fly. I had a conversation with the administrator in Winchester. He said any house built in 1945 or before is considered historic. My neighborhood was built in 62, I'm 13 years away from that. So any house from 45 or beyond, or before that has regulations as to what can be built. They're also given a one-year time before anything could be built to discuss, and he said almost to deter some of these buildings. Any house built in Winchester post-1945 is still subject to scrutiny or, or examination by their, their zoning board of appeals. And he said that towns can have multiple master plans for different sections of towns, not just one for the full town. I know we had one not too long ago and it kind of set for the commercial areas of the town.
You're at four minutes.
Okay, so I, one more minute.
Nope, no more things. I give everybody three minutes. I'm sorry, I apologize for that. This is, we go to three minutes, I gave you an extra minute. So now you're at four minutes.
Okay, so I would just ask that the, I would just ask that the board does meet with the other committees to hopefully do something proactive.
We will take this into consideration and I have to treat everybody the same, that's why I'm doing this. I treat everybody the exact same way, so that way there no one can say I favored one or the other.
No problem.
So we will take this into consideration and I will call you and I will talk to you about it outside of this.
No problem. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And thank you for these pictures. Very helpful.
You're welcome.
Okay, 241, discussion, approval, Ways and Means. Mr. Segarino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight we have several members of our Ways and Means Committee here to discuss the potential and request that the board at least have a discussion about the possibility of a debt exclusion in relation to our two most recent projects that were passed at town meeting, the police station and the Fox Hill school.
Okay.
Hi, thank you. So Paul asked if, if we would come and just have a discussion with you about our recommendations that, that we have made in the, in the last six months or so to consider a debt exclusion for the spring townwide ballot. So we, we presented the town meeting, both for the Fox Hill and the police station. I know you, you were all there, you all saw that. The numbers haven't really changed significantly. We, we discussed this over the last year and March 13th meeting, I believe, we came up with the, some recommendations and they were focused on the police station project and vote, but carried over to the Fox Hill also as we knew that was coming in September. And so our, our recommendation at that time was that both projects be passed and not be, not be constricted by a debt exclusion, but that we then, after they were passed, if they were passed, we would come back and, and hope that, that the select board would consider doing a debt exclusion in the future, just to kind of shore up our, our long-term budgeting and the, and the long-term look of our, of our budget for future planning. So we can go through the numbers again. We have some slides here. See if this works. There we go. So if you remember back when we, when we spoke at, at town meeting and, and in our own meetings, we talked about the assumptions and this is really a discussion about assumptions and, and it's all about which ones you want to use. You can choose and, and justify some, some very good numbers that make this a, a non-starter, we don't even need to consider it. You can get very conservative and then it seems like we better get on and, and get something done very quickly. I think everybody's goal is to avoid a Prop 2.5 override in the future and, and that's certainly the goal of Ways and Means is to keep a healthy budget and, and leave enough kind of headspace for unexpected events, like a downturn in the economy, a pandemic, PFAS, things like that. I, I think we should stop as a town and realize that we've been able to, to absorb a downturn in the economy and a pandemic and an unexpected $15 or $16 million filter building at the water treatment plant, all without having to worry about a Prop 2.5 override and really worry about what it did to the, the long-term health of our budget. With the two new buildings, depending on which assessment, which, which assumptions you use, there, there are some assumptions that make that a little more nerve-wracking and, and kind of close that gap and take away some of the wiggle room or the headroom, if you will. So if you look at 20-year averages for rates of, of growth, both new growth for development and also if, if we continue with, with our, our budget growth of about 4.85%, it's likely that we won't have to do any unusual tax increases. It's likely that we would stay within and under the, the tax, the levy capacity, I'm sorry, the levy limit. But as you add these building projects in, the, the line starts to converge with our, with our maximum taxing capacity and, and starts to look like we'd have to be concerned about a possible override in the future. So I, I think it's important for everyone, you certainly know this, but it's important for the residents and, and for us all to continue to reinforce. A debt exclusion, if you elect to go forward with one, does not change any expected expenditures and it doesn't change anyone's taxes. So town meeting approved the police station, town meeting approved Fox Hill, and the taxes are, are going to be what they're going to be as those projects are bonded and, and completed. The debt exclusion does give us some headroom in the future. If you look at the chart that's up now, you'll see two, two lines that follow along above the bar graph. The lower line is our current levy limit and you can see that we stay above it and this is with the 1.94% new value growth annually. The upper line there is, is if we were to pass a debt exclusion for the Fox Hill and the police station. And you can see that that just gives us approximately the same amount of excess capacity that we've enjoyed for a long time and, and what we would have continued to have if we didn't have these new building projects. This takes it a step further. You can see the, the lower of the two lines is our levy limit and you can see that as you add a high school project in of any amount, and, and we know that the high school is kind of the next big project the town is facing and, and we know we need to do something there. It, it's highly unlikely that we'd be able to do a high school project without a debt exclusion and, and you can kind of see that here graphically. And we certainly understand that in order to pass a high school project, we're going to have to go to the town for a debt exclusion. The second line there also shows that, that again, the, the high school would not fit in even if we do a debt exclusion for Fox Hill and, and the police station. So the, the green on the top is, is a projected high school project and, and it would still require a, an exclusion of its own. As we go to the, I'm, I'm, I apologize to Ed, I'm not using your bubbles. So as you, as you go to the, our final graph here, this one shows that your, your two levy limit lines here show a single debt exclusion on the bottom there that would cover the high school. And you can see then that every year we bump right up to our levy limit. And so you, we can say that we will wait and just do a debt exclusion for the high school and that will probably work. However, you're going to be right up against our, our levy capacity as you go year to year. If we were to vote for a, a debt exclusion for Fox Hill and the police station, we would still need one for the high school and that would be the upper line, which goes back to restoring that excess levy capacity that gives us the protection as we go into future budgeting and, and just gives us a little bit of, of headroom and certainly a longer runway. You know, unfortunately, the, the two lines of what we actually tax and what we're allowed to tax are always converging. It's just how far into the future do they cross? Another unfortunate and unforeseen circumstance is just the dramatic inflation that we've seen and, and we know you guys are looking at that and facing it, but this would be a completely different discussion had we not seen the, the unprecedented inflation of the last four years. We still would not be needing to think about this or be concerned about it. So, you know, in one sense, I'm grateful and we're fortunate that we're still now, after weathering the inflation and all of the things I listed, we're still in a position where we have to consider doing a debt exclusion, but we're not in a position where we're talking about limiting our budget to 2.5% next year. But it is something that we need to keep in mind and, and, and look forward. A, a difference between the 1.94 new growth number that we've, that we've gone with in these charts and 1.64 or a 1.5% new growth changes this dramatically and we'll be talking about overrides and exclusions. And, and so again, it's, it's the assumptions you choose to go with and if, if you want it to be completely positive, that's not that hard to do. And if you want it to be completely negative, neither is that. So we're trying to be conservative and we're trying to, to come up with an option. We did not feel that it was a, a big enough concern and a big, big enough likelihood that it would be a reason not to build a police station or not to build Fox Hill and take advantage of the, of the state money. But it is something that we would like to see considered anyway and then it's your As far as pros and cons, to us, the pro would be that it gives us some headroom to deal with unexpected expenses or budget shortfalls in the future. It, it certainly looks good to credit rate, to the, to the bond rating agencies. Potentially would, would give us access to a little bit lower interest rates for future bonding and certainly decreases the probability of an override vote, which is, you know, just a, a situation we'd like to avoid. And the, the con of, of not doing it really is that it, it reduces pressure to cut costs in the future. So, you know, I, I would say that there'll be more and more pressure to, to actually cut costs and, and figure out ways to spend less as opposed to figuring out how to manage the budget that we have and level services. It, you know, you could foresee a time where we're, we're not talking about level services anymore.
Any questions? Absolutely. We'll start with Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Doug.
Sure.
And all of Ways and Means for all the work you've done on, on this has been very extensive. This is the first presentation you've made on this. It probably won't be the last. So thank you for coming in tonight. What are your thoughts on why, so, you know, I, I've had to do a lot of reading up on this and educating myself on what a debt exclusion is, how it compares to a override, you know, terms like Prop 2.5. I'm, you know, I work in accounting, but I'm not by nature a finance person, so this is all, you know, I'm, I'm, I've learned it all now, but it was new to me at a time and it took a lot to understand. What are your thoughts on why the sort of standard route of a debt exclusion wasn't taken, meaning sort of having the town vote on the project and the merits of the project and fund, and funding it via debt exclusion, which is my understanding how it typically goes? It's not like typically go that it's, the town passes it and then they ask for the debt exclusion after the fact.
Right. Generally, I would say, at, at least in my view and the way we discussed it as a committee, is that a debt exclusion is a budget tool in the best-case scenario and it's a way that you can try to keep a budget healthy and, and get the community to say that, that it's a, a better way to operate. But most towns, because it's a hard decision to make and you're struggling with it right now, most towns don't do it as a budget tool to say, let's be a little healthier. They wait until that we can't build this building unless we do a debt exclusion. And then it becomes a vote on the merits of the project, even though that wasn't the intention. So debt exclusion was never put in place to be a, a vote on the merits of a project. It becomes that because you have a townwide vote to, to say, yeah, you can borrow the money or not. But to, for a capital expense like that, it comes through town meeting, it comes through the select board and it doesn't necessarily go for a full town vote. You know, we're, we're under our spend, our levy capacity. We did not see a reason to treat it differently than we treated. We did not see a reason to treat it differently than we treated the DPW building, the rec-maintenance building, the PFAS facility, the, I mean, we can go back the last 20 years. We've actually done a lot of large capital projects, and we haven't gone for a debt exclusion because it stayed under that levy limit. And so we felt like that was the right way to do this one as well.
Okay. And also, and this might be just asking your opinion, but what are your thoughts on whether the average voter is going to understand all this? Like...
Well, I think that's, you know, I'm not going to underestimate the average voter. I think that they can learn, and if you put the information out there and they want to be informed, it's not an easy topic. Unfortunately, just the terminology is with all the 2.5s make it difficult. But, you know, I think it would be a heavy lift to get the voter informed, but if you put the information out there, I mean, we have a fairly smart electorate here.
Okay. So I've thought about this a lot, like...
Sure.
Probably more than I should have. Just been back and forth, back and forth, all the scenarios. And I really just wanted to come tonight with an open mind, clean slate, and hopefully, you know, gain confidence that putting it on the ballot for the voters is the right thing to do, that voters will be able to understand it, that it's going to be explained simply, and they'll be like, sure, of course. I'm just, I'm concerned about the sort of perception of kind of a bait and switch by residents. You know, they didn't get a say in these projects, you know, in terms of whether they were worthy, and, you know, now we're asking them to approve this sort of confusing budgeting method. So I'm always first to be pro-democracy and say, put it to the voters, yes. But in this case, I would have wanted to hear what their opinion was on the project itself, and...
I'm sorry, you would, I just didn't hear you.
Yeah.
You would have wanted to hear what the voters said.
I would have wanted to hear their opinion on the project itself and not, you know, leave the accounting methods up to the voters. So it's just, we're past that point at this point, and I, like you said, I don't want to shortchange or under, you know, underestimate the average voter, but just from my experience, like I said, in understanding all this, I think this would be very difficult, and like you said, a heavy lift to explain. And I think that the time to do it is when the high school comes along, because that is a much easier scenario to explain to voters. They're voting on the merit of the project, they're voting on, you know, whether to increase their taxes. If we explain the debt exclusion now, and they're, you know, it's a completely different scenario, and then we're going to try to re-explain it when the high school comes along, I worry that there's sort of a little erosion of trust. You know, our town doesn't have a good history with debt exclusions. I mean, we've only had two, they both failed, so...
And then we built the projects anyway.
I know.
Yeah. So, you know, again, that wasn't a vote on the merits of the project, I mean, or, I guess I would just say, you know, of everything you've said, I completely understand and agree, and it's not an easy decision, but I think it's important to continue to come back to the residents and explain or say, not leave it out there as an open question. It's, the vote by the residents on the merits of the project come through their representatives at town meeting. The residents don't vote on whether we do anything else. There's not, there's not a thing that we've done in the last 25 years that the residents have voted on, and we've done some huge expenditures. They didn't vote on the DPW building. They probably would have voted it down, maybe because it's a big garage, but it was certainly a need, and you spend the time with town meeting, and we have these multi-hour meetings with a million questions and kind of work our way through it, and then they vote to yes or no, and then they're accountable to the electorate in that way. But it's unfortunate that debt exclusion in any time becomes a vote on the merits of the project. It does by its nature if you have to approve the money, but, you know, then we should start bringing many things before the electorate and ask for an up or down vote on a lot of things you guys decide all the time. So in that sense, I would just say, we have to be cautious not to let it become something it isn't, just because it's difficult to explain.
Okay. I just wanted to express my opinion on...
Sure, I appreciate it, and it's not anything that I think we haven't had as well.
Yeah, and I'm honestly still back and forth.
Yeah.
I will hear what the rest of my, the select board members have to say, and we'll see. But thank you again.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to you, Doug, and to the Ways and Means team for all the hard work you've done on both of these projects, the largest projects that we've ever had in Burlington as far as dollar-wise go. And I know I've seen this presentation many times, and a lot of hard work has been put into it. I want to disagree with something you just said, that the decision, I would have preferred the debt exclusion to be voted on before the project was approved. And I disagree that allowing, saying the town meeting should never have, town meeting makes a decision. When we do a project of this size that's unprecedented in town history, I would have liked the residents to have a say in their tax bill, and that was my initial opposition to the way we did it. Back in May, when we were trying to get funding for the police station, it was presented by town, by Ways and Means, that we were going to move ahead with this debt exclusion after the fact next April. But when we came to September, Town, Ways and Means presented to Town Meeting that it wasn't necessary, and we would be fine. So what changed between April and, I mean, May and September in the presentation by Ways and Means to Town Meeting? Because it does kind of feel like a bait and switch, in a way, to what we've already agreed on and how we're moving forward.
I don't think, I would just disagree with that that's what happened. In the presentation, we said that we still, it was our recommendation that the town put a debt exclusion on the ballot for the spring 2025 vote. That was clear, I mean, I believe that was clear. There was a question, if I remember correctly, from the audience even asking that, and that her understanding was that it would be a debt exclusion and that our vote in September was contingent on a debt exclusion, and we certainly never said that. So I, we haven't changed. Our March 13 vote is the last vote we took on this, that's our recommendation, that's the recommendation that we put forward to Town Meeting. And honestly, this is the first that I've heard that anyone was confused about that. So if there's confusion out there about that, then I'll try to clear that up, but...
Okay, I guess, I guess I heard it differently than the presentation, but again, that's neither here nor there, and I want to move forward with this. This is kind of a non-traditional way to present a debt exclusion to the town, and Sidney did an awesome in-depth with Adam Chaplin, and I wish, I meant to actually email him this question, and I'll open it to anyone here, Paul or John. Has anyone heard of a town in the Commonwealth going about a debt exclusion in this manner after the fact, after the project was approved and getting it passed? Because again, it's going to take, as Sarah mentioned, a huge component of education. It's going to be very confusing to the voters. It was very confusing for me to learn all this, and I spent a lot of time learning about debt exclusions, tax levy, and Prop 2.5, and all the different iterations and all the different things you could do. Has there ever been a town that we know of that's actually done this? And I meant, I wish, I meant to email Adam and ask him.
Chairman, I'll just say that I do believe that it has happened in the past. You know, we did check out the website, there's not a real easy way to determine it by looking at the state website. But I think the scenario where it might come about is a town passes a project, and then several years later, they get into a little bit of a budget quandary, and they say, hey, you know, what can we do to balance this budget over the next few years? And that, as Doug mentioned, a debt exclusion being a tool was presented as one of the options and perhaps passed. But we could certainly look into that, just to see if we can identify any individual towns. John, are you aware of any, or?
Yeah, I'm looking to see if I can find the list. And I believe the one closest to home was when we talked, when we first started talking about it, Sam Hockenberry, who works in the accounting office, who's a financial analyst, had been the FinCom champ person in his hometown back when he was even younger than he is today, if you can believe it. And he talked about them doing it there and how confusing it was, but it was, for them to do it, it was total budget tool because we have no other choices. We're cutting the budget, or we're going to exclude some of these projects that happened. I know we had a short list of where we had heard about that it happened before. They certainly have happened before, I just can't, I don't have the list right now.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, if we were to approve this tonight and put this to the town, and put it on the ballot for April, and ask the town to exclude this debt on the school or the police project or whatever combination, or whatever it is, what is the plan for getting out the word? What is the plan to educate the voters and let them know what is actually happening? Who is going to be the one to advocate for this? Who's going to be the one to tell people the real reason why we're doing this? And that the projects are going forward, no matter which way they vote, their taxes essentially could be the same, but their taxes could be raised higher if we do exclude the debt. What's the process going to be like to educate the voters on what they're actually voting on if we approve to put it on the ballot?
I assume it would be you.
Yeah, it's us.
We'd be happy to back you up. I mean, we'd be happy to, but that...
We get that.
So we would get that job.
Yeah, we sign ourselves up for it.
Okay, no further questions.
Well, you know, to be fair, you're the taxing authority, so you're actually protecting your future. It's not going to affect us. Paul Sagarino told us a long time ago, one of the easiest budgets to write is when you start bumping up to the levy limit, because then everybody says we get 2.5. So it's really not a, you know, from our standpoint, it was, this would be healthier. It's not a, we're not in trouble. The town budget's not in trouble. It's just, it would be healthier.
Thank you.
Mike, just clarification, I think kind of what you were referencing, if there's not a pro and a con group in town, like, you know, similar to CPA, there was a couple of different groups there, those in favor and those against, and they sort of mobilized to take up the lead on the yes or no side of it. We had looked into that a little bit, and what happens in a case where there's no yes or no particular groups that emerge in favor or against, then town council will write the pros and cons that goes to the voter, similar to the red book that we get from the Secretary of State's office, and town council will put together the pros and cons of each side. If there aren't any groups that emerge that want to take up the charge for a yes or a no vote.
The only reason why I ask is if you're being realistic, the way it's going to play is, to the average voter, is that if they vote yes, this is going to raise my taxes. If they vote no, it won't. And there will have to be a huge educational, I would love to exclude the debt, and I wanted to do it long ago, and I wanted to do it from the jump, but we went a different way, no big deal, we're moving forward. But to get this done, there will have to be a huge effort on behalf of somebody to educate the residents on what we're doing, what a debt exclusion means, and I'm just wondering, who, I mean, do we have, do we have someone who's willing to take that on? Or do we have a plan?
The select board, that's us.
All right.
That's us to let them know, figure out how we're going to do it.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, you know, let's, let's look forward. I've been, some might say dangerously pessimistic about this whole thing from a financial standpoint strictly, you know, and, you know, I think that we find ourselves in a situation where probably a lot of other towns aren't in our position because through a combination of luck and good decision-making, we've managed to keep ourselves in a really strong position financially for a very long time. Other towns can't claim the same thing. Other towns have been doing 2.5 overrides for decades, and that's how they get their larger municipal projects dealt with. We have not had to face the music, so to speak, up until now-ish, right? Because, to your point, Doug, we're not there yet, right?
And we may never, you know, we may not, the high school, we'd get there, but we may not get there with...
Right, exactly. You know, money could start running from the sky.
Things could just continue the way they have been, and we're pretty good.
Yeah, I don't disagree, you know, but, you know, I would say that it would behoove us as the financial stewards, as the body in charge of, you know, sending the tax levy, to move these projects to debt exclusion, to afford us any kind of wiggle room we think we might need regardless, you know, of what that might be over the next few years, and regardless of the financial possible, you know, fortuitousness, you know, that may come. Meaning that I think that we're at a very unique point, you know, post-pandemic, right? You know, our economic development director, Melissa Totaklis, has reported on general vacancy and it being up, you know, I think it was 19.5 percent, and then an additional 5 percent in, I don't know that they work in front of me, so I'm going to speak out of school. It was like industry or industrial, was that right, Paul? Am I...
I missed the 5 percent.
It was, it was in total close to 20-ish percent vacancy, which is higher than usual for us, right? That doesn't take into account the unrealized vacancy of people working from home, right? Oracle's got, you know, was it 3,000 to 5,000 people? 5,000 people who aren't here on a day-to-day basis anymore, affecting just the general economy, right? Same applies to Microsoft, same applies to Salesforce, right? They've got thousands, Keurig, Dr. Pepper, right? Thousands and thousands of, you know, people who were naturally engaged in our economy aren't here, right? And I don't see that changing. I see work from home becoming stronger every day. I see companies putting hard lines in the sand and saying it's going to be this, or it's going to be that. You know, and even if companies do say that we're going to start pushing for a more hybrid model, that only affords us a couple days in the week where we're going to see a boost in our, you know, overall daytime population. So, you know, I think separate from this, all the work that Melissa's doing on the mall zone, mall road rezoning, and all of the shifts in how we can, you know, better accommodate for our, the change in our economy are tantamount to how we survive as a community going forward, right? But I think that while we figure that out, getting this dollar amount out of our operating budget and off of our plate, not from a tax perspective, is the right course of action. It gives us that wiggle room, that breathing room for us to continue to assess and make plans going forward. To Doug's point earlier, the high school's going to be on a debt exclusion whether we want it to be or not, right? It's going to, it's going to hit that limit, it's going to hit that threshold, and I don't want to spend the next, call it five years, with these two projects in our operating budget bogging us down. I'd rather move them out of the way and focus on, you know, making sure we have that breathing room and making sure that, you know, from a financial standpoint, we are safe and comfortable, and if an emergency arises, we can handle it, right? I think from an educational standpoint, yeah, no one's, no one's underestimating the voters. I, you know, I did a bunch of Googling earlier over the weekend and today, and found a handful of towns who have documentation easily explaining what a debt exclusion is. I think that if we put right at the jump that, you know, your taxes are going to increase regardless of your vote, you know, like, that's a part of the education process, a part of the write-up. It's incumbent upon us to make sure that the residents, you know, understand that. Yeah, when we get to the high school, it's going to be a slightly different story, and residents might have concerns. I don't deny that for a hot second, you know, but I think that, you know, it would be up to us to make sure that we're advocating for the message. I mean, you know, I didn't hear too much, you know, rustling when we educated folks around the electrical aggregation, and to me, that was more confusing than this. I didn't hear...
You weren't sitting in that office with the calls that Sam was getting every day. There were a lot of questions.
And I'm, and I'm sure that there were, right? But I think that, again, to me, that was more confusing than this, right? And I think that if we lay out, again, it has to be a well-thought message and a very clear message with a legal to make sure that we hit the points, and we have to think about how we're going to experience it as residents, you know, for the first time hearing it, that we, that we have to do that. It's incumbent upon us. You know, I would strongly encourage us to vote in favor. I support the idea of moving these to a debt exclusion. I think, again, from a financial standpoint, it makes the most sense. It gives us a little bit more cushion, a little more buffer, and that's where I'd like to see us as, as financial stewards for the community, ensuring that we've got that wiggle room going forward. So I'll stop there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think other towns would be envious of us to be in this position.
I think other towns would be envious of us to be in this position. Other towns don't have this choice. They don't have this option. I know I've seen it on the news when a town wants to build a school, you get the people that have school-aged children saying, "Vote yes." You get people that don't have school-aged children saying, "Vote no," and it pits resident against resident. And I'm glad that we did it this way. I support this 100% going to vote in April. When I have three of the smartest people I ever met saying the exact same thing, I agree with you guys, the whole ways of me... Yeah, that's all three of you. Yep. I think it's a great opportunity for us. It's going to be a huge public awareness or information campaign. I'll do whatever I can because this, it's the same amount of money, whether it's here or there. I think at max it was going to be, when this thing's fully rolled out and both projects are going, the average household tax bill is going to be increased $350 a year, all right? So it's going to take years to even get to that.
Right.
It's going to go up in phases. But say in the worst case scenario, or the biggest case scenario, it's $350 per household on average. It's still going to be 350 if it's in operating budget. It's still going to be 350 if it's excluded. But what that does is if we have another, like, say the PFAS we did not expect, that we had to come up with money, we had an emergency, what if one of our buildings becomes non-functional? That gives us a cushion. It gives us protection to be able to absorb something bad down the road. Money's going to be the same no matter where, you know, where it is, but it gives us, like I said, this is why I think other towns are envious, because we have the ability to protect ourselves or protect our infrastructure by utilizing and taking this out of the operating budget and putting it into a debt exclusion. Yes, people have asked me, "This is a prop two and a half override?" I'm saying, "No, it's not." Again, people think that, hear that. I think it is incumbent upon us to just tell people, explain it. And once, it takes some people, you know, to get it right away, some people, you have to kind of reword it a little, but eventually, if you explain it correctly, okay, and that may be me saying, explaining it wrong, but if you explain it correctly, I think the average citizen will tend to agree, yeah, it's the same amount of money, it's here or there, but it gives us budget protection. So I'm fully in support of having this go to debt exclusion in April and let the residents decide where they want that money to come from. That's all.
Okay. Hey, guys. Listen, I'm really not going to say much. I've heard it, these guys have done a great job with the questions that they're asking and it, Mr. Tigger said it, no matter how we look at it, we're going to pay for this one way or the other. So it depends upon, well, I've gotten this, I can honestly say, this is the first time in 12 years I've gotten over eight phone calls on something. And I got a lot more than eight. I'm just saying over, it was a lot. I got a lot of phone calls on, "Do not do a debt exclusion. We don't need it right now. Do a debt exclusion, it's the best thing to do." So it's confusing for everybody. It's absolutely confusing for everybody. So at this point here, we need an approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Wants to do what?
I'm sorry, can I ask a follow-up?
Sure you can.
Question? I don't know who this is for, and I feel like I've asked this question before, but in terms of the ballot and how it looks on a ballot, are these presented as two different debts to exclude or are we presenting them together as...
We will obviously check with town council on that, but I think the appropriate way to be doing, would do would be two separate questions, police station and school.
I'd almost, maybe I should have looked up previous debt exclusion ballots and see what the wording is. I'd almost feel more comfortable looking into what it looks like on a ballot before I can vote on whether to put it on. Sorry, I know we don't, we don't want to...
If I may.
Yes.
That's specified by statute, what the exact wording needs to be. We have no flexibility on that.
Pretty standard, standard language.
I can add to that. So I think the, the example that Sam Hugnberri brought up was a good one and Jermaine here because he was talking about some bonds that were bundled and went to a debt exclusion. So I do believe that we could bundle two projects and pose that, but we have to, we have to state it in a very particular way, which is what John Isler referenced.
Sarah, do you feel that not bundled will be more confusing than bundled?
I feel like having them as two separate questions is going to be more, they're going to be more inclined to think that it's a vote for or against the project itself.
Right. Some of what I saw as I looked at it, it seemed like you can, you could bundle and you just have to name the projects specifically that are covered under the issue, the single vote. But you can say that, that was my understanding as I've asked people, but obviously, town council. So it would be to exclude this for the police station and Fox Hill Elementary Building Project. That was my understanding, but we have to see.
Yeah, you can, because the MSBA isn't involved in this, it's not contingent on the MSBA at this point, we're allowed to group them together as a single vote or it can be split as two separate votes and the only wording difference would be that it's an exclusion for, you know, Fox Hill plus the police station project or a separate question that says the Fox Hill project and one that says the police station project. But again, the rest of the wording is entirely specified by statutes, barely boiler plate, boiler plate and says, you know, there will be a debt exclusion under the Prop 2 and a Half law for, you know, the debt associated with a given project.
Okay. And is this a situation where we can say a yes vote does this and a no vote does this on the ballot?
There is a pros and cons statement that is, is sent out to the voters, similar to on the CPA tax. Like I say, I'm not sure whether separating the question out and getting half a debt exclusion approved or, you know, putting all our eggs in one giant debt exclusion basket would work and again, if, if you're not comfortable without seeing the language, it's certainly, we can postpone the vote till the next meeting to get some clarification there for the board members on, on those aspects.
Mr. Chairman, would it be prudent to have Lisa or representative here for the next meeting?
We absolutely could, yep.
Just to answer any questions that we might have?
Yep.
We kicked around even the idea or the, the question, does it have to be the exact dollar amount?
I don't believe it does.
And can it be, you know, can we as a town come up with, this is, this is the comfort, this is our comfort zone with excess levy capacity? This is the headroom that we like. In order to get there, it needs to be, this many million dollars need to be excluded and it would come from, it probably wouldn't equal the entirety of the police station and Fox Hill, but it's probably more than either of those individually. So just, you know, as another question.
I'd like to say I'd be much more comfortable if the board members felt they had all the information that they needed to, to make an appropriate decision. So I don't think that we'll be hurt if we, if we postpone this to the 18th, this decision. We'll have town council here, we'll try to get some sample ballot questions for the board to review at that time.
I would feel more comfortable with that and I apologize, I know we wanted to get this done.
No, that's a good idea.
It's a great question, Sarah, because I think it does, it does affect how, excuse me, how our residents can perceive not just the, the notion of whether out there approving the projects, but by splitting the vote in that way, we could actually cause both of them to fail, you know, if people aren't really understanding what we're asking them to do. So the notion of being clear on the language and preferentially bundled so that one debt exclusion that we're moving, I think is only going to help the clarity and, and success rate. So I am, I am in favor of that.
And just to follow, Sarah, I think it makes sense for us to look at something before we vote to approve it because otherwise we're going, going to approve something we haven't seen. So I agree, to the 18th would be a good idea.
Anything?
No, I think we should all be comfortable before we make the vote and looking forward to Mr. Priest leading the educational campaign for the town for this.
The vice chairman, you'd be right with him. Well, I can say, yes, I was all set to vote tonight, so this is very interesting. I think it's smiling over there. That's all good. I think the more information we have, the better off we are, so I've always been like that. Mr. Sagorino, I believe that we're going to go till the 18th.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
Ed, Ed is in. Ed is in.
Oh, he's looking that way.
So why do you wish for... Because I was trying to be discreet and then you were like, "What?" I had to say it three times.
I was just talking.
Nobody's watching.
I tried, I tried. The audience couldn't hear, like you usually do. Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
It's getting late, we've never been here this long.
So I, I want to speak to the delay in the conversation. I, I fully support that because I think we need to make it very clear what, what we're doing and what questions we're posing to the residents. And I, I want to admit that what we're doing is quite unusual. And I just, Mrs. Collie, to take your, your, your healthy budget analogy one step forward, typically towns will wait until they're unhealthy and then will go to the doctor for, you know, a dose of antibiotic. We're asking our town to take some vitamins ahead of time and that's usually not done. Usually these are very reactive and the reason why we're doing it is because we have a tradition and a history of being very fiscally responsible and we want to continue that and we want to have the same headroom that we've enjoyed in the past and because the, we have big plans and the Burlington High School project really looms large. We know that that's going to be a debt exclusion and so, you know, we may go ahead with this, we may not. We may pass it, we may not. What's really important is that we have the conversation and a longer conversation may be a good thing rather than a bad thing because we need to get a lot of ideas out, we need to educate a lot of people because we're certainly going to have to make this decision in the, in the near future with regards to the, the high school project.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Chairman, I can make a motion to continue this to the November 18th meeting on or after 6:00 P.M.
Yeah, it's not a public hearing, so we don't have to specify.
I like times.
Thank you.
Everyone okay with that?
Second, yeah.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'll talk to Lynn if we can put you up first on the agenda. Only if Gary's not here. Gary's going last. Okay, where are we now? 242, approval, Assistant Town Contractor.
Not taken.
Mr. Sagorino.
As the board members are aware, I provided you with some information. There's one person in town who has not been set with a wage adjustment for fiscal year 2025 and that is Assistant Town Administrator John Denizio. The adjustment that we proposed is, is within the range of what the other department heads received this year and is well within the, the comparables for other communities in terms of what the position does. So I would urge you to vote to approve that.
Okay. Well, let me just start by saying this. I usually don't go first, but I'm going to. Mr. Denizio, I can't thank you enough for everything you do for the town. We're lucky to have you in Burlington. The acclamations that you've come across in the years that you've been here are incredible. I see no reason to even go much further. I'm sure the board members want to talk. Just get right into a vote and take care of this. It would be a tragedy if we didn't keep him on this, this town, ours. He can't say enough good things. So I'm going to just go right down the line. Mike, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'd like to echo your sentiment. We're very lucky to have you, John, and I think I'm in favor of this. I'm very thankful for all you do for the town and for the board and for everything around Burlington and I think it's a fair and reasonable increase and it's in line with what's going on in, in other towns and where our budget lies. So I'm fully in favor and thankful to you, John, for everything you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Same. Thank you, John, for everything you do and this is a well-deserved increase. Wish we could give more, but given the state of our budget, yeah. But just really appreciate everything you do for us and for the town, John. So keep doing it, please.
Thanks, Chairman. It is well-deserved and, John, you are a treasure.
In many ways.
It's in so many ways. But no, actually, what I want to say is, you know, because we don't get to talk about you guys often and you don't like it when we do, so, you know, tough on both. You know, we, I think we've all seen our fair share of select board meetings. I have yet to see another select board and their administrative team with the relationship that we have with you guys. And I'm so thankful and grateful for it that we can be honest with each other, that we can have conversations, that they don't have to be contentious, that, you know, we can, we can, you guys are so willing to give information and walk us through things and support us and, you know, I hope that we are able to provide that support in kind, you know, but I mean, I know that I can drop you a text or shoot you a call and get information and that, to me, is, is worlds above just you being good at your job, right? And so for that, I am wildly grateful to have you guys and, and I, yes, I do hope we never lose you, at least until you're ready to retire, at which point I will fight you tooth and nail. But until that day comes, you know, thank you for...
I don't know about you, but I'm getting emotional. That was great.
We got to get you all home, it's getting late, guys.
Mr. Jim, and I think we should put his increase out to a debt exclusion vote. If, if someone's past behavior is a predictor of future behavior, we're very lucky to have you, John. When the town administrator had an illness that was an extended illness, you stepped right in and you hit the ground running. One thing I love about you is your responsiveness. Like, I think it was Nick that said, text, email, call right away. You get, if you don't have the numbers or the answer, you'll let us know. And when you look at other towns, whether it be the board themselves or the board versus the town administration, you see other towns having, they're butting heads, they're arguing, someone's getting fired or, we don't have that problem. We work as an unbelievable team and I'll do anything, including this increase, to keep another town from trying to steal you. We all need supporters.
Okay. Anybody else? Oh, that's all five of us, sorry. Lynn? You okay? You know how much you guys get along so well.
He knows how I feel.
He knows. I got to... Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the increase for our Assistant Town Administrator contract.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain, 5-0-0. You're sticking around for a little while, John. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words.
Minutes.
Chairman, I'd like to make motion to approve the minutes from October 7th, October 23rd and the Alcohol Subcommittee minutes from October 7th.
Second.
Motion made in second. It was fabulous.
Sunny out here.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain. Okay, so I'm taking it and nobody has a subcommittee report?
One quick one.
Of course, the fire department did what?
No, 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 not the fire department. Select person Collie and I have a meeting with the Sculpture Park representatives on the 19th to discuss the next steps regarding the Sculpture Park. We know it's going to be impacted by the construction of the police station, so we want to get everybody together to start getting the, a plan for the future. That was it.
Okay. Thank you. Nick?
I'll just say that tomorrow's election day, so if you haven't voted yet, get out and vote, but otherwise I have nothing else to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Michael?
Nick took now as chairman.
Okay. Sarah?
I'll just say polls are open 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. tomorrow.
I'll just say polls are open 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. tomorrow, and I will say, they've done, they were doing early voting the last two weeks in this room, and there was just a consistent stream of people throughout the day, so I think a lot of people took advantage. So thanks to, you know, Amy and her staff for running that. I also did want to say that Monday is Veterans Day, and just wanted to express our gratitude to our veterans, the brave men and women who, you know, served our country, and thank them for their sacrifices in their service. Happy Veterans Day, and so our town offices will be closed that day, and also trash pickup will be delayed till Friday next week.
Town residents, too, is 10 o'clock on the common as it is every year?
I think it's the same time as every year. I can get that, get that to you.
Okay. Mrs. Sagorino, any?
I just want to dovetail on what Sarah said. Kudos to Amy and all of our dedicated election workers. They've been here for two weeks. The legislature isn't making it any easier to run elections, they go on for a long time, they got thousands of mail-in ballots to deal with, and they really deal with it very gracefully. And there was quite a bit of activity here at the town hall, surprising amount of people coming in, a real steady stream, so they worked their tails off and they're almost at the finish line, and look forward to having a successful count, and I know, as any town clerk would say, we don't want any recounts, so hopefully we'll have a nice, clear result, and kudos to Amy and her staff. And again, I would like to welcome, invite everyone in the town, our Veterans Department really does a spectacular Veterans Day ceremony at the Chestnut Hill Cemetery on Monday.
On Monday.
I think it's on the comment.
It's on the comment.
Yeah, it's on the comment.
It's on the common?
Yeah.
I think Memorial Day is at the cemetery.
Memorial Day is at the cemetery, yeah.
Okay. On that note.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion made the second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn.